I'm called the, uh, hundredth edition, the March tenth edition of the city council order. We have the declaration of the forum, and we are in the same council order bitten, we're on the market. We're all to keep this one time. Please join me in class. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Manager Morgan, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, um, okay, so we are at the first opportunity for citizen input. Uh, anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes, state your name and address, and direct those comments to me. Do we have anybody that wants to speak? No, all right. Next up, consent agenda. Uh, let's see, consent agenda items A through E. Are there any items that wish, that we wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Counselor Roberts?
I would like to remove, uh, item B from the consent agenda.
Item B, City of Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency, IGA, for loan and repayment for design construction loan on Northeast Aspen Drive. Okay, we will move that to, to, uh, let's see, six. Any others? Do we have any, uh, public comment on consent agenda item, sent consent agenda items A, C, D, and E? Seeing none, council comments? All right, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A, C, D, and E?
No move.
Okay. Then moved by Counselor Meyer, seconded by Counselor Hayward. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Consent agenda item B, removed from consent agenda. Counselor Roberts?
Uh, in reading this over, I know we're going to be covering this topic later as part of the HIRA, uh, hearing, but as we're technically two separate bodies, the city council and then the HIRA board, I felt it may be appropriate in case there's, uh, council comments, uh, regarding this item that maybe we just cover briefly. Um, so that if there's any topics that need to happen from the council side of that, uh, that coin, we could do that.
I agree with you. Assistant City Manager Morgan?
Yeah, I'd actually ask, uh, uh, City Planner Spencer to offer some thoughts.
Yeah, uh, you may remember back in twenty twenty-three, the city issued a capital improvement bond for twenty million dollars, I believe, correct, Mr. Morgan? Yeah, and fifteen million was allocated for city capital improvements, and then five million was also bonded for the Northeast Aspen Drive project because the city has much better bonding capacity than the Urban Renewal District, the city can get better terms. And so the city borrowed twenty million dollars with the intention of loaning five million to the Urban Renewal District for construction of that street and acquisition of that right of way. And, um, we have, of course, taken possession of that money, it's in the Urban Renewal District budget now. And then what this agreement is doing is specifying that the Urban Renewal District will pay that loan back over twenty years with a one percent interest rate back to the city using the tax increment from increased value within that district. It's basically a formality that is required by the RRS is when you are loaning money to an urban renewal district.
Okay, so this is something we've been through. However, we're just, you know, re- re-
This is the third IGA that we have done for loaning of funds.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Seeing none, council comments?
We got one.
You go ahead.
Uh, I just want to say I appreciate, uh, Counsel Robert's, uh, reasoning for bringing it up. Uh, at this point, I mean, three of the five of us here are brand new, and so this is a project that's been kind of going, going on for a while, and I mean, it's a five million dollar project and a consent agenda. So I, I, I can see why you would want to bring it up and talk about it. It's, it's a big decision, or at least it's, it's a lot of money being, um, a big decision where a lot of money is being, you know, had, and so, uh, I think this is an exciting project. Uh, it's, it's basically going to connect where Harper is at all the way across and hopefully bring in more business opportunities for a lot of the businesses here in the area. But, um, I, I support the project and I fully support and understand why you would bring it up. I think it's excellent to talk about.
Counsel Hayward?
Yeah, I want to say thank you, Josh, for bringing this up. Um, the only question I have is would the public or the taxpayers in Hermiston see an increase?
No. Okay. The, the way urban renewal works is, is funded just off frozen value. So when you form an urban renewal area, the property taxes are then frozen at that point when you form the district. So in this case, I believe that that area has sixty-five million in assessed value. And that sixty-five million tax revenue continues to go to all of the existing districts that get that, that revenue. But each additional dollar in value that comes, like from the Popeyes that was constructed, that money stays within the district in property taxes and for the life of the district and is used to fund the properties and projects. So that's where the money will be repaid from Popeyes, Chipotle, those things that are getting built as, as this property develops.
No, thank you for explaining that. I know a lot of citizens have been asking what my tax dollars are being paid. That's kind of why I asked it, because I know we're really grateful with what we use and how we spend it. I just figured, get it on the record so they'd be like, hey, look, we're not trying to raise your taxes or anything. Thank you.
Counsel Roberts?
I was also that same mind, um, just to reassure the, the public, um, because it is five million dollars. And if all you looked at was the agenda, you go, oh, man, there's a five million dollars in the consent agenda. Um, just to, to reassure people that this money has already been budgeted. It's not impacting any other city services or projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel Meyer?
I would just like to say that I fully support this project, and it is something that needs to happen.
Counsel Kelso, might as well make it a full run.
I second what Counselor Meyer said, I fully support this project, and it's, I think, somewhat overdue. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Yes, thanks for, for the explanation, you know, the, it's always, it's always good to explain how the, how the urban renewal district operate, you know, it's, for some people to look at it, it's just a, you know, again, you, the optics of it as being a, you know, a five million dollar, that's just, you know, where's that money coming from? So I appreciate everybody wanting to, to look at how it, how we operate that and how we keep that moving. But also at this time, like to congratulate the two new members of the, uh, Parks and Rec Committee, Jay Ego and Doug Minton, so. Okay, moving on, oh, wait, no, let's, uh, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and approve that, shall we? Or at least work towards approving it?
I would move to approve item B.
Second it.
Okay, it's been, I was almost closed, huh? I had, we had our attorney over there ready to, to stop me, though. Okay, so it's been motioned by Counsel Robert, uh, seconded by Counsel Hayward. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 And if I could vote yes, I would too. Five zero, approved. All right, uh, ordinances and resolution, resolution twenty-three fifty-eight authorizing the city manager to apply match, for matching funds for improvements to the Heroes Sports Plex. Assistant City Manager Morgan?
Yes, I'd best off to Mr. Arts.
Yes, thank you, City, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is a resolution to go out for grant funding for the Hermiston, Oregon Sports Plex, the Heroes complex up at EOTech. Um, in spring two twelve, twenty twenty-three, we entered in a construction lease with Made to Thrive, um, and are allowing them to construct our sports fields there up at, uh, EOTech. And, um, in return, they will, uh, donate everything back to the city once construction is done. And so construction is still ongoing, um, there are concrete light bases, uh, in the ground, ready for future improvements, and, and the Heroes Committee is still fundraising for that. And, uh, we'd like to go out for the local government grant program, uh, grant funding. There's fifteen million dollars this year to, uh, spend on projects, and, uh, this, uh, project would be a good fit for that funding to complete the project up there with, uh, additional lighting of the four fields. Um, acquisition of the, a portable ADA, accessible restroom trailer, improvements to the ADA parking and field access, electrical and irrigation improvements up there. So the funds that are being committed to this are from the privately raised, uh, dollars that the Heroes Committee is, uh, raising and, and giving pledges for, uh, coming up for the application period, which starts April first.
Okay. Um, real quick, uh, side note, um, just for those who are watching from home, a reminder that the camera at this point in time is not functioning, it may return. Yep, it has returned now, excellent, okay. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the arrival of Counsel McCarthy, we now have six. Okay, so, um, any public comment regarding the, uh, resolution twenty-three fifty-eight? Seeing none, council comment? Counsel Brown?
Uh, just for the council, this is kind of the update that we gave for our last EOTech meeting. Uh, so when we were saying that the city was going to collaborate with Heroes to try to, uh, help them on the project, uh, this is how, I guess, we're going to be able to do so in helping them apply, uh, at a statewide grant. So, um, what the committee is doing coming to fruition here in the city council.
Excellent. Counsel Kelso?
Thank you, I think this is an excellent opportunity for the city to pursue funds that are available statewide, and if we don't apply for those matching funds, someone else will. And, um, Heroes is a great asset to our community, um, it brings business into town, and, um, it's a great outlet for youth recreation, so I'm highly in favor.
Counsel Hayward?
Um, I'm all for this, um, I just got a tour of EOTech, um, I think the community's going to benefit with this, with the sporting place to have kids play there, other leagues coming into this town, and also with the lights there during fair week, um, they'll be able to see where the cars are, knowing their cars are illuminated, so no one's out there doing anything, also help our police out, making sure it's all safe. So I'm all for this.
Any other council comments?
This also is a very worthwhile project that we have been pursuing, and now we're going to have the opportunity to apply for some free money.
Counsel Roberts?
Also want to recognize, um, the fundraising efforts that, uh, have taken place to help us meet those matching funds. So this is not general fund contribution, this is grassroots, the people who wanted to, to pursue this have been, uh, partnering with the city, and so, yes, I'm also in full support.
You sure? Okay, um, yeah, this is a fantastic opportunity, um, you know, one of my favorite sayings is the answer's always known unless you ask. So, I think, moving, moving down the road, I think this is, is a fantastic opportunity for us to get something accomplished up there, we can, can always use more, more light. Okay, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-eight and lay upon the record.
So move.
And, Doc? Let's see, I'll second it.
Okay, I got a Counsel Kelso on the motion and Counsel Hayward on the second. Roll call.
Yes.
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 And passes unanimously, six zero. Resolution twenty-three fifty-nine, airport, uh, RPZ, property acquisition, COAR grant acceptance. Assistant City Manager Morgan?
Yes, uh, this is a project we've been talking about quite a bit, uh, over the past several years. Um, and so this is just authorization to accept, uh, a grant from the State Department of Aviation. They've already programmed us for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this project, that's looking south along Ot Road, roughly on the northeast corner of EOTech, uh, look, excuse me, looking north along Ot Road, and so you can see, uh, an airplane flying over Ot Road. So that airplane is flying through what we call our runway protection zone, and so, uh, this is a project we've been working on really since about two thousand and sixteen, uh, to realign Ot Road out of the runway protection zone, uh, as FAA is highly interested in doing that and willing to give us the funds to pursue that. So, uh, ultimately, the biggest component of this project is to acquire about a hundred and forty acres on the right-hand side of that picture, uh, what you can see is currently green in that image. And so acquiring those hundred and forty acres, uh, is going to be funded mostly through grants. So, uh, the FAA is, uh, has us programmed for about three point six million dollars in grant funding to acquire the property. Uh, all FAA grants require a ten percent local match or a ten percent non-federal match. Uh, so our, uh, City of Hermiston match would otherwise be around four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but what we're asking this evening is for you to accept a state-of-organ core grant, uh, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we can use as our non-federal, non-federal match towards the project. So, that's it.
Free money is always a good thing, right?
Yes.
And this, this will accomplish getting us more, better access or better restriction to the access of the end of the road, runway?
Yeah, it's a safety issue is why the FAA is interested in it, is ultimately moving, you know, that, uh, right of way, which invites people, traffic, trucks, vehicles, all sorts of things into an area where you could potentially, uh, very rarely happens, but it could happen that you could have a airplane and vehicle conflict, so.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, council comment? Counsel Meyer?
Okay, so will that road be improved as well?
That is, within the next ten years, the intention for it. So that we, I mentioned, we've been working on this project since about two thousand and sixteen. Uh, originally, uh, we were anticipating, uh, relocating Ot Road through that, uh, through that field. Uh, the FAA, through multiple machination cycles of grant funding, uh, they, you know, dropped the project a couple of times, then brought it back, and ultimately through all that process, uh, they decided, well, we can't afford to fund the actual road relocation, uh, but we'll pay for the property acquisition, but they left the funding amount the same. So, I don't know how that saved them any money, but, yeah, so they're giving us the same amount of money that they were planning on before, uh, but they're not requiring us to move the road with these funds. But within ten years, we anticipate moving the roadway.
Isn't that road used for the back entrance to the, um, rodeo parking lot?
Only if you're a local to know about it.
Well, there you go. But yes, it will be improved so that-
Yeah, the county came in and hard-surfaced it several years ago, so it's, it's much better than what it was previously. I think as it sits right now, I don't think we're in a major rush to really like rebuild it or anything. So I think within the next ten years, as that road starts to deteriorate, it makes more sense to wait as long as we can before we actually relocate it out of the RPZ.
Get the water trucks out there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other comments, council comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-nine and lay upon the record?
Second.
Okay, motion by Counsel Hayward, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Six zero, okay, motion passes unanimously, six zero. Resolution twenty-three sixty, monitor well purchase. Assistant City Manager Morgan?
Yeah, backed by popular demand, I wanted to talk more about aquifer storage and recovery, so I came back for another one. Now, this, uh, resolution for you this evening is to purchase a monitoring well, but ultimately it is related to our, uh, ASR project that we talked about at the last council meeting. So this resolution would actually authorize the purchase of an existing, uh, groundwater well. Uh, total cost of, uh, at two hundred thousand dollars, uh, and ultimately, the purpose of this well will be used, uh, to monitor groundwater levels associated with the ASR project. So you'll remember, um, ASR, we're going to be, uh, using a, a groundwater well to store potable water over the wintertime and withdraw it during the summertime. So, uh, city council awarded a contract for what we're referring to as ASR three at the last council meeting, and so we'll get moving on that project here this, uh, summer. So on this, so on this, uh, image, actually, I think it'll be okay. So, yeah, on this image, you can see that is the, uh, ASR well that you approved at the last council meeting, right down along, uh, Feadville Road. Uh, but also, we have in the same aquifer, uh, that we'll be injecting water into, we have our well number six, which is down behind Ranch and Home, uh, well number two, which is in Newport Park, and well number four, which is by Public Works along Elm Avenue. So all of three of those are in, um, the same aquifer that we'll be injecting groundwater into. Additionally, what you can see here is, uh, ASR two, you may have wondered why we were calling this one ASR three, you may have been wondering where ASR one and two are. Uh, so as we've been working on this project for several years at this point, originally, uh, well number six, uh, was looked at to actually be an injection well to use for ASR. Uh, then we began considering another, uh, ASR well somewhere over in this vicinity, um, before ultimately deciding on proceeding with a third, uh, well location, ASR three. But in our application to the state for our ASR program, uh, we're still proposing that we would, in the future, potentially have three wells that we could inject and recover water from, and so those would be well number six, another potential well, ASR number two, and then ASR number three, which is what we're going to be drilling here this year. So that gives you a lay of land there. Also, as part of our application to the state, uh, we have to submit a monitoring well plan where we say, you know, here's the three potential wells that we may be injecting water in. And so then, these are wells that we're going to use to monitor other groundwater levels in that same aquifer. So we pitched, uh, these five other wells here in the region that also reach down into the same aquifer as part of our, uh, monitoring well network. And so one of the comments that we received back from, uh, OWRD this past winter uh, was that they would like to see, uh, a closer, uh, monitoring well to ASR three as part of our groundwater monitoring network. So you can see this image, these green bubbles there, uh, those are, uh, highly conceptual, um, representations of where the, the limits of what, uh, I talked about as the bubble. When we're injecting groundwater into the ground, it's creating this big bubble of, uh, surface water underground. So that's representing generally the limits of where, uh, that bubble will extend to. So that's the bubble for ASR three, this is the limits of, uh, where the bubble would be for a potential ASR two if we ever drill one in the future, and then here's where, uh, the bubble would be for well number six if we were to use that for ASR. So what we're proposing is to purchase, uh, what we're now referring to as monitoring well one, MW one, and so that is located right at the end of Southeast Ninth, immediately adjacent to, uh, Pioneer Seeds, uh, production facility. So this is an aerial image from about last spring, and so monitoring well one is located right there, as I mentioned, right across from Pioneer Seed, uh, this is what that area looked like just three years ago and, or four years ago in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, so you can see all of this area was irrigated and actively farmed, and all of the water for all of this area here, all originated from that well, which is now monitoring well one. So, uh, all of the water rights associated with that well have been transferred off, uh, through various purchases, uh, by the folks who bought all the land, um, and then turned around and sold it to, to Amazon. The water rights themselves have been transferred off for irrigation on, uh, their other fields. And so this is now just, uh, about a twelve-hundred-foot-deep hole in the ground on a quarter acre parcel. Doesn't really serve much other purpose, uh, at this point. So, uh, as I mentioned, we were really interested in that, uh, well, uh, initially as one of our options for just using that, uh, as an ASR well, and so, uh, worked extensively with the, the property owner. Um, and then in the winter of twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we ran some, uh, very significant flow tests, uh, discharging to some nearby canals, uh, so we felt good about the, the production of the well. Uh, but we did, when we did some water quality sampling, uh, we got some hits back for, uh, an, a component called PCE, and don't ask me what PCE stands for, uh, but, uh, it was above the OHA limits, uh, for drinking water, which was significantly, uh, uh, not good, uh, for the, for that becoming an ASR well. Uh, so before we threw in the towel on this well, uh, we ran additional water quality samples in April, uh, sent them to two separate labs that time, and in that time, both of those separate samples, they both also came back above OHA's limits for PCE. Um, so we did some additional due diligence, I, I really didn't want to give up on this well, uh, for the purposes of ASR. Um, so we continued to do a lot of due diligence on it, but ultimately, the recommendation from GSI, which is our groundwater consultants who are, are guiding us through this ASR project, ultimately, their recommendation was to abandon this, uh, for any further consideration, uh, for viability as an ASR well. Uh, they feel like, um, overcoming the PCE contamination is not, uh, completely insurmountable, but because, uh, ASR is highly regulated, when we're injecting groundwater into the ground, uh, there is concern of pushing that contamination, you know, out into the rest of the aquifer. Um, so, so, like I said, it's not completely insurmountable, but, uh, they just recommended, in the interest of getting a successful ASR project, uh, locating a, a new ASR well somewhere else and drilling a new one. But PCE does not, uh, prevent, uh, that well from acting as a monitoring well. A monitoring well, uh, for these purposes is purely just for measuring how deep the groundwater is. So, um, all we need is a deep hole in the ground that we can just test down and see where the groundwater is. So, uh, that's a requirement of our application with, uh, OWRD is to see how our ASR three injections are impacting the groundwater, uh, surrounding there. So, um, uh, the other bullet point there is, long-term, I mentioned, it may become useful for some other needs by the city, uh, but the main thrust of why we're acquiring this is to act as a, a monitoring well for our ultimate ASR network. Um, and then we'll see, as we proceed forward, if there are other ways that we can utilize this well, uh, for potentially producing some water if, if we can address. So, uh, with that, the, the purchase price on the well, two hundred thousand dollars, if you'll remember, the price of, uh, constructing ASR three, which you ordered last week, is significantly higher than that. So, that's, that's the price. Stand for any questions?
Counsel Brown?
I, I just had a question on the ASR, the bubbles again, uh, so not necessarily exactly about the well, but that you had a picture a little bit ago, it just kind of made me think a little bit about, uh, you had two circumferences intersecting, and so I guess, I'm just wondering if that bubble, I'm imagining they're at different depths, and they're not going to, I guess, merge into one?
They could, yeah, and so, um, yeah, this is a highly conceptualized, um, graphic. Uh, right now, we're really focused on ASR three, the one on the bottom. Uh, that's the one that's been fully designed and the groundwater folks have done all of their, um, analysis on. Um, if we get to a point where we decide to go ahead and drill ASR two, which is the one that's stacked just on top of that, uh, we'll do a lot more investigation and see, you know, because it may not be a bad thing that those two bubbles interact and, and mix with each other, uh, so.
Thank you. Any public comment? Resolution 2360. Okay, any other council comments? I have one question myself. Oh, okay, go ahead, Counselor Kelso.
Thank you. You mentioned that in the future, this monitoring well might serve other purposes for the city. What are some of those conceptual purposes?
Ultimately, being using it to pull groundwater out of the ground and use for our drinking water purposes. So there are potential ways to address the contamination. They may be very costly, and we haven't dove into those entirely. But again, as you saw, the cost of drilling new wells is it there may be a point where spending a lot of money to address that contamination may be worth it compared to the cost of drilling a new well. So like I mentioned, that's not the primary purpose. But I think there's still some value there that is worth exploring in the future.
Has has any investigation been done into the source or potential sources of that contamination?
Yeah, I mean, so as I mentioned, that that well was the 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 main well that provided irrigation to all the the fields surrounding there. So it was almost certainly contamination associated with operating that well. So that was put in in the seventies and then just operated as farm well for a long time. So it was probably some contamination associated with servicing the pumps and those types of things, so.
Thank you.
So my questions are in regards to the the fact that these these wells that we're looking at drilling are literally right underneath circles which have been being irrigated. We have, we're, you know, we're having a problem with nitrates due to fertilization of, you know, agricultural areas. Is this is this a concern for us? Is this, you know, are we going to, you know, we're going to drill this hole? And we're going to find we got too much nitrates to use that water? Is that?
Yeah, so again, this monitoring well number one, the initial plan right now is not to pull water out of it. ASR three, which we will be pulling water out of, again, the intention with that is we're going to be shoving surface water, treated surface water into the ground and creating this bubble so that then as we start to suck water out of that in the summertime, it's kind of the the first in, last in, first out concept. So we shove more water in, and then when we turn around and start sucking it back out, you're sucking out the last drops that you just put in. So you're not getting into pulling water that was there originally. It was originally groundwater until you suck the the bubble completely dry, which hopefully we'll never get to. But if we operate it correctly, we shouldn't. But then finally, to the point of potential nitrate contamination, you know, the aquifer that we're in 1,500 feet down, there is no nitrate contamination. So when they talk about nitrate contamination, they're almost exclusively talking about very shallow residential wells, so just a few, a couple hundred feet possibly. So that is where you get the, you know, fertilizer and runoff and those types of things leaching into the soil. But it's completely capped and separated by the basalt layers from the the deeper aquifers. So again, our I mentioned our well number six, well number four, well number two, they all draw from the same aquifers and there's zero nitrate in those those wells. The only wells that we ever get any possible nitrate hit is from our well number five, which is again, one of those shallow alluvial wells that doesn't go beneath the basalt.
Just wanted to make, you know, get that out.
Very clear, no nitrates.
I figured where it was, you know, where where we were. But I just want to make sure that the public is understanding, especially since, you know, you're showing it directly underneath a circle. So I appreciate it. Counselor Hayward.
Just have one question because I'm not an expert in water. By importing water into the ground and pulling it, it's not going to cause sinkhole in the future or anything?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's what I figured.
Any other council comments? All right, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2360 and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor McCarthy motion, Counselor Hayward seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, six zero. Okay. Cruising right along today. Okay, council committees and liaison. Any council committees or liaison reports?
I have one.
Counselor Hayward.
I attended the Faith Base Committee Board this week or last week. Was they're giving their survey together to send out to the public. Then a big topic was I Love My City came up. It is for May 17th and 18th. You can go register IloveHermiston and you can sign up to see all the events and be a part of it. It's going to be a great event. It sounds like we have quite a bit of churches involved, quite a bit of companies involved, even looking for more to make this a bigger event than what it is. And it's the eighth year that they've done this. So it's going to be a nice event for the community.
Yes, it is always a fantastic event, lots of help, lots of getting out there and and making our our area a better place to live. Thank you, that's May 17th and 18th.
Yes.
And IloveHermiston.com?
Yes, and you can go register if you're part of church, your church should be on there. If not, please get ahold of them on the website and they'll work with that church getting that on there.
Any other council comments? On committee reports?
We'll have our first meeting for the Recreation Projects Fund this Thursday.
Okay. Counselor Roberts?
Yes, so I have two committee reports. First one was the library board meeting I attended on February 26th. So keep in mind, this is a little bit old information. But at the time, they were going to be interviewing four people for some open positions. And we're hoping to have some good candidates, so that should have been completed. So hopefully, we'll have some good candidates for those. The steel was due to arrive the week after the meeting, so that should hopefully have arrived. That steel was needed to start the next phase of the project. So as long as that has happened, the project should be moving along. They also discussed whether or not to change the hours that the library is open. They're going to be looking at historical data and what the new library is going to be offering and and possibly getting some community input on that as well in in some form, whether that's a survey or how that's handled is still being discussed. But whether or not the hours that we have been operating is is the best for the public. So be on the lookout for that. Council tour is tentatively scheduled for April 14th during our workshop. So hopefully, that can can go forward as well. And April 14th. And then there is a community foundation fund that that the library has that they really haven't tapped in years. And so they're looking at creative ways that they might be able to to utilize that to better the services. And then Airport Advisory Committee, we went over a good portion of that tonight with our city council. But the we have a schedule for the construction of the new T-Hanger building, which is kind of exciting up there. Tentatively, they're looking at August 8th or thereabout for completion of that project, so that will be exciting. We talked about the adjoining land tonight, so I won't bore you with that. And then it sounds like Lifelight has requested an extension of their lease for another year, so that's good for us. And we hope to keep that partnership going as well.
Excellent. Lot of good stuff coming out of those two committees. Thank you, Counselor Roberts. Counselor Kelso.
The members of the Hispanic Advisory Committee were invited to a BMCC event on Wednesday, March 5th. It was a piece of the Oregon Humanities Conversation Project. Counselor Dron and I were able to attend, and it was fascinating, to say the least. We got to hear from immigrants from not only Latin America, but also we had a person from Sudan who was there and got to share some of her traditions and her culture. So I found that a very fascinating event and well worth well worth our time.
Any other council committees or liaisons comments? All right, mayor's report. Here was, I believe it was last week, I attended the Yumatilla City Council Meeting. It was interesting, to say the least. They do things a little bit different than we do. Again, as I I challenged all you, you guys to attend some of the different council meetings throughout our our region. And I still stand by that. I would like to see you guys go to some of these meetings and just listen in and what finding out the things that they have that's coming up that's important. You know, Yumatilla is putting in a new police, possibly putting in a new police station. And there's some things going on there. There's some strife, but it's a it's a it's an interesting process, so. Our our high school principal, Mr. Spoo, was recently awarded a Patriot Award from the National Guard. I think that's a important thing to bring forward, one of our one of our city folks getting a recognition in that respect. So I I'd like to congratulate Mr. Spoo for that award. He was he was nominated by one of the members of the National Guard, who also is a teacher. And aside from that, that's it for me. Counselor McCarthy. Council President report.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend last week the ribbon cutting at the office building for AWS right next to, I think, Big Space. It was very well attended with lots of finger food options, which I was wondering where the forks were. But no, you were supposed to eat them with your fingers, so I waited a little bit longer than I normally would. But they had good attendance, lots of, I mean, you know, Mr. Morgan was there, I know Byron was there. And I can't remember exactly if, I think Maria, didn't Maria showed up, I believe, Counselor Dron? And a few others. And yep, and Mr. Kelso was there, so it was well attended. Lots of people from different community leaders to different businesses also were there, so that was great. I want to draw everybody's attention to just a few things coming up in March. And and hopefully, I do this in correct calendar order. But on the 19th will be the Disseminated Service Awards thrown together by Good Shepherd Community Health Foundation in inside the community center on that evening. And then just later, on March 22nd, there's the Daddy Daughter Dance thrown by Hermiston Parks and Recreation. Tickets still available for that event?
Very limited.
Very limited, okay, note for itself. And then, of course, the Hermiston Chamber of Commerce has their Chamber Speed Networking Luncheon. Tickets on sale now from March 26th. Luncheon catered by Veg Out, so make sure to pay attention, contact the chamber if you need tickets to that event.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Outstanding. Okay, other council reports. Counselor Kelso.
I was also at the AWS ribbon cutting for their office here in North in Northeast Oregon. And I just wanted to say how happy I am that they have a presence here now in office. And they do so many great things for our community. I'm proud to have them here. So thank you, AWS, for the invitation, and thank you for opening an office here.
Yes, we are, they are a fantastic partner for the city. Any other council comments? Seeing none, we are moving to, none of our youth advisors are here. Oh, well, come on up, didn't see over here at our.
You're up.
Would you like to, would you like to give us a report? Do you have anything to tell us? Any mini-mini mo?
We got three head shakes there.
That's 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 three no's, so okay, last chance. All right. Assistant City Managers report.
Nothing to report. I just want to hear more about ASR.
All right, well. Not quite at 7:30, but hey. All right, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn the Hermiston City Council Meeting and convene and convene the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. And we'll call that to order. New business, City of Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency, IGA, for loan and repayment for design construction of loan near at Northeast Aspen Drive.
Mr. Spencer, anything, Dad?
We we did already cover this at the previous, but you are taking off your city council hat and putting on your urban renewal board hat. And earlier, basically, the intergovernmental agreement says the city loans the money out of our bonded funds to the urban renewal district. That was the city council side. Now the urban renewal side is saying, yes, we're acknowledging this loan and we'll be paying it back over 20 years.
Okay. Is there any public comment about that? Any council comment about that? Or I'm sorry, agency report, agency count content. Can I get a motion, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Give it to Counselor Meyer and Counselor Kelso on the second. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, yes. Time six. Any other business for the Urban Renewal Agency? Seeing none, we are adjourned.